Reporting has begun.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Goldsmith. Councilmember Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
And Mayor James, we know you are here.
Thank you. All right. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great. So hopefully you all have had an opportunity just to look at the meeting agenda and if it is the will of the council, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the July 25th, 2023 meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. And for our minutes for July 11th, if you had an opportunity to look at them, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the July 11th, 2023 meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We've got two of them, so that is doubly good. Any comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. And this brings us to our petitions and communications, our August proclamations. And we have one for National Traffic Awareness Month, and I believe that is you, Mr. Goldsmith or Councilwoman Goldsmith?
Yes. Whereas the children in our community will soon be returning to school, walking through and waiting in school bus stops, and many will also be walking through their school exam, whereas it is a shared responsibility to take every action possible to protect the children and all pedestrians in our community, including educated pedestrians and drivers alike on ways to event traffic-related injury and death. And whereas the Governor's Highway Safety Association estimates that more than 7,000 pied-herds pedestrians were killed on drivers in 2022. And whereas every year over 3,000 pedestrian-involved crashes occur on Maryland roads. And whereas the Council of the Town of LaPlata is concerned about the safety of the children and all pedestrians in the town and wishes to help ensure a safe pedestrian environment by prompting public awareness about and enforcement of posted speed limits in our neighborhoods and throughout the entire community. And whereas the LaPlata Police Department will be promoting public awareness of this issue and educating drivers who exceed posted speed limits in our neighborhoods and community about the dangers their speeding poses to children and all pedestrians. Now therefore, we, the Council of the Town of LaPlata, do hereby proclaim that the month of August 2023, National Traffic Awareness Month in the Town of LaPlata, and all drivers are encouraged to be aware of and comply with posted speed limits on streets within the community. Council of the Town of LaPlata, Janine James Bayer, James Goldsmith Councilman, Matthew Trolinger Councilman, Evelyn Bryant Ward Councilwoman, David Jenkins Councilman.
Thank you very much. And it is so important with this traffic awareness. We also have a new light that is going up on radio station and 488. So that is going to be a change in some of our behavior, and we will be having a four-way stop on St. Mary's and Centennial. So again, we need to just be aware of that and drive safely. Thank you very much, Councilman Goldsmith. Next is National Night Out. Councilman Trolinger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do have a proclamation for National Night Out, which is August 1st, 2023. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police and community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas National Night Out enhances the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. And whereas National Night Out showcases the vital importance of police-community partnerships and citizen involvement. Whereas the National Night Out provides an opportunity for neighbors in LaPlata to join over 38 million neighbors across 16,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, Canadian cities, military bases worldwide on the first Tuesday in August. Now therefore, we, the Council of the Town of LaPlata, do hereby proclaim August 1st, 2023 is National Night Out in the Town of LaPlata, Maryland, and all neighbors are encouraged to participate in or host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, and various other community events with safety demonstrations, seminars, youth events, and visits from emergency personnel. Council of the Town of LaPlata, signed by Mayor Janine James, Councilman James Goldsmith, Councilman Matthew Trolinger, Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward, and Councilman David Jenkins.
Thank you very much. And while we're on that subject, I'm going to go a little out of order right here. We do have a presentation for National Night Out. Would you mind doing that as well?
Absolutely. So if I could have the King's Grant Homeowners Association President Gary Eisenbaum come on up. We are presenting you, in the amount of $200, our grant for National Night Out Mini Grant recipient, this 25th day of July, 2023. I understand there is a special opportunity there for King's Grant residents. Can you say something for our residents of 15 seconds or less of what they could expect in the King's Grant community on Tuesday, August 1st?
This way or that way? Well, in King's Grant, we are well into our program to revitalize our community and get people back out in the streets. So one more time, we will support the National Night Out. We will have taco trucks and dogs. I don't think we're doing burgers this year, but ice cream, events for the kids. So it'll be a very nice community event. And of course, we're expecting all of our first responders to show for what they can because we appreciate them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Goldsmith, Councilman Goldsmith, I'm having a hard time today. Could you please tell us which one you have as well?
I have the Washington Square in the amount of $200 for National Night Out, 25th day of July, 2023, appreciation, recognition of your participation in Town of LaPlata's National Night Out Mini Grant program. Washington Square is notorious for their ice cream social. And even though you're going to try to take something away from us, we still have enough left over for the emergency response to getting this up. But that's a big thing, and that we enjoy doing it in that they get to build camaraderie within our community. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right. Next on our agenda is a special recognition for two young men. And I'm going to have you both come up, and we're going to come down there.
So this is always an exciting time when we are able to recognize our point. You put it on. Our point is here. And these two gentlemen were, they won national titles in taekwondo. And there is even a connection. This is how small this community is. These two gentlemen had, one of their instructors, Big Jake, they remember him as, and that is my six-foot-five son that had a part in forming a little bit. Maybe it was a good target practice. I don't know. But we are super proud of you. And Councilwoman Bryant Ward has a connection with you. And what connection is that?
She's my son. She's my son's teacher.
So it is a small room here. So if you can come over here, Lucas, and come over here. And we're going to present, and they say the same except it is unique to you. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, would you read the citation for? I will. But when he was in my Sunday School class, he was a tiny baby. He was so, so small. I can't believe all of these muscles sitting up here beside me. The Council of the Town of LaPlata awards this certificate of recognition to Lucas Beach. Congratulations for earning a first-place national title at the Amateur Athletic Union Taekwondo National Championships. The discipline required to earn a national-level title is exceptional. Your commitment to excellence serves as an example for your peers and reflects great credit on yourself, your diagee, and the Town of LaPlata. Signed, Janine James, Mayor, Town of LaPlata. Congratulations. And please, for a win, should receive the same citation except with your name. So congratulations. That is awesome. Keep up the good work. You're going to go right here. We're going to bookend you. And it's right here. And you've got it. We might, you got to see. So the bling is showing. Put it down a little bit over there. There you go. All right. Lots of picturing. One, two, three. All right. Congratulations and continued success to both of you. Thank you so much for representing LaPlata and Southern Maryland martial arts.
Sorry. At this time, it's our public comment. If anyone would like to speak this evening, I ask that you state your name, whether you live in the incorporated town limits. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be appreciated. Anybody? All right, moving on, we will go with our monthly reports. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Any questions to the monthly report?
I will open the floor up to Council. Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Thank you, Chief, again for the update and the monthly presentation. Just one comment and one question. I appreciate, we appreciate the memorandum about the upward ticking calls and activities. That was one of my questions. So that answered that. The other issue is, are there any other issues or concerns with respect to activities at the hospital from your officers?
Nothing out of the ordinary that I know of. You know, we just had a couple clear of the hospital. They were there for a couple hours because of a mental health call, but it has nothing to do with the hospital, just what they encountered on the street.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Keep up the great work. All right. Next is Director Harrington.
Good evening.
Good evening. Any questions for Director Harrington? Councilman Jenkins, go ahead. You're still muted.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Thank you, Director Harrington, for your report. And I just wanted to, again, thank you for paying attention to the GIS and making those improvements and tracking some information. So I think I just wanted to add that comment and say thanks for that process.
All right. Any other questions from Council?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Harrington, so we're still working on the draft for the APFO?
Yes.
How far along are we with it now?
The draft is there. It has been sent to the town attorney for further revisions and review.
So did it come back from him? Because it was with him last month. Did it come back and go back to him?
Not at this point. It's a, like I said, it's a very complicated code. And it's something that's going to take a lot of time to really go through and make sure that we're doing this right. So.
If I may, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, we did meet with the attorney last week, I believe it was, and we did discuss it. I'm also in review, so Jay doesn't, our attorney is not the only one who responsible for some of the delay. I'm also responsible for some of that. But as Director Harrington said, it is a very complex document with a lot of moving parts and trying to get things aligned. And, you know, we do want to get it right because obviously it's in the best interest of everyone to get it right. So it may take a little while. We're hopeful sooner than later. Hopefully, we don't have that comment next month.
Sure.
Within her report. Or at least we can, you know, report out some progress is being made.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Councilman Trolinger, Ward 2. Just to follow up on Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Is there a, just a goal timeframe as to completion? Not to put pressure, but just so that we know, hey, we're still in line. Of course, it's going to be, this is massive undertaking, right?
It's definitely as soon as possible. We know how important this is. I've already gone through two kind of complete revisions and doing research and looking at other, there isn't really another good municipality to compare to. And counties work a little bit different than municipalities do. So we're kind of writing this from scratch. So we did receive some input from Jamie Kedrick with Mead and Hunt on the traffic side. And then I did get some input from a crone on the water and sewer design side. And now we're looking at the allocation side and how that's actually going to work. So it's, like I said, that's something that we're really trying to make sure that we narrow down and get it right.
I would expect, just because of the importance of this process and this document that's being put together, that we would need a lot of time devoted to the different elements, right, that make up this project. Mr. Manuel, like, how do you foresee the review of this once it gets to the final stage and the attorney has located it? Director Harrington's on her fourth revision, and it's as good as we can get it. But we're going through the different elements, like the traffic and the, you know, each part.
Yeah, it's a lot to unwind. And, you know, I could, we haven't really discussed it yet. So I don't want to drop anything on Janine, but we almost need to roll out to sort of explain it to the development community. You know, this is what it is. They're familiar with adequate public facility ordinances. For the most part, the County of Charles has one. We deal with a lot of localized, local developers, but also, you know, someone of national prominence. They've dealt with them in other areas. So they will be familiar. But it will be something that we'll want to sort of roll out and explain to the affected parties in the future. You know, these are what our expectations are, and this is the rules that will be applied.
Now, before that point, though, it'll be, we brought to Council.
Yes.
And what I was kind of referring to was, I mean, it's not, we can't do this in a normal business meeting because it would be, it could take an hour in and of itself just to go through two of the elements out of four or five.
Right. It'll have to be pieced out. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you so much. All right. That brings, didn't even, you know, no introduction needed. Come on down, Director Stahl.
I watched the agenda.
You did. Come on down. All right. Any questions for Director Stahl?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Stahl saw on the projects for Stormwater, what's happening on Nantamoy Drive in the cul-de-sac?
We have to replace that pipe. The pipe has definitely rotted out over in there. And part of it, the problem is, is that the town owns the pipe under the road, but we have to then address the easement over across to the pond, which is somewhat of a problem in the situation. So it is a project on our list. We are currently working on a pipe up on Oriole that will be put in tomorrow. But it is definitely something, you know, along with all of the others that are, you know, were part of the original HOA. Replacement of the pipe under the road is really no problem. It's the pipe going over to the Stormwater Facility that is somewhat in question because, as you know, that's a rental community over there, and that HOA controls that pipe on that side of it. And we need to coordinate with them as to whether or not they're going to turn it over to the town. So it is something that is on our project list. It's just one of those that's a little more challenging because of the easement issue.
Sure. Is it, will it affect the cul-de-sac parking?
When we do it, yes, because we're going to have to dig straight across. There's an island right in the middle of the cul-de-sac there. And the storm drain is literally right at the end of that island. It's out in the middle. And the pipe goes, if I'm sitting there facing that little island, it goes straight across and right over to the Stormwater Facility over there. We did go down there, however, and clean it all out. So we went down and cleaned the whole thing because it was flooding the one night. But the whole bottom of the pipe has rotted out, and which is not uncommon for aged infrastructure like that. And we did clean it out. And so it is back to functional again. But it will require a new pipe and will require some assistance to get the easements over to the town so that we can legally do the other part of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Mr. Director Stahl, I'm curious, there seem to be a number of projects, Oriole Lane, Blue Jay Court, Wales, at Suffolk, they seem to have been on the list, or the list for Stormwater Management for a significant matter, a long time. Is there a reason why they still remain on the list? Are they complicated projects, or you just can't get to them?
The answer is all of the above. Yes, they're very complicated projects. The one at Blue Jay, for instance, is 20 feet off of a house, 35 feet in the ground. There's no bottom to the pipe. And we're figuring out how to be able to pull a new pipe through there and to get a new pipe through it. We have tried to do this in an economic fashion that fixes things at a reasonable cost. We have gone out to third-party contractors now. We have one small pipe where we're trying to use cast-in-place fiberglass insert inside the pipe. And the one small pipe up there at Morris Drive was $15,000 for the cast-in-place. Working within our Stormwater budget, you know, we could do, you know, several projects. I would imagine the project at Blue Jay would probably blow my budget in Stormwater in and of itself. And so we've been trying to work through these using our own manpower. It's tough during the summertime because things are, you know, working between, or being off and that kind of thing. We were up today working on Oriole, trying to get a line fed through that to be able to pull the pipe. Bob Hardy's going to weld that for us tomorrow. And we will be able to pull it through with a cable. But we spent the entire day today trying to get the cable pulled through the pipe. And the problem is, we go through normally with the jetter, but if there's no bottom to the pipe, the jetter takes a nosedive and goes down in the ground and doesn't go through the pipe. And so we spend an inordinate amount of time trying to get these pulled through the pipe. These are all very tough projects. I think people assume that just because, you know, that's a, you know, that's a two-hour project. It's not. Most of them are week or two-week-long projects that we're getting to. And so, you know, I'm pulling them from other things. You know, we had a major sewer problem over at the wastewater treatment plant. I spent the entire day Saturday working on a leak. I drove, I had to get Ferguson to open up to get parts from Ferguson on Saturday, got them to open up, and had to drive to Upper Marlboro. It took me four and a half hours to drive from LaPlata just to Upper Marlboro and back on Saturday. And so, you know, it turned into be what literally was probably, you know, an hour's fix once we got, once I got back home. But the bottom line is, I had a whole crew of men for the whole day to fix a small leak. And so we have a very capable crew. But, you know, in trying to work around, there are a lot of days where we have two or three spare guys. Once we have trash, for instance, where on Fridays, we may be doing yard waste, where we're running three trucks. And, you know, we, with vacations and everything else, we're putting there and trying to work through special projects where we need, you know, probably seven or eight guys between truck drivers, equipment operators, all those kind of things. It's tough. And I'm not trying to make excuses.
No.
But that's just, that's the reality of it is, is that, and even when we fix things, people assume that, you know, things get fixed. You know, I would point out that over on Redwood Circle, you saw the pictures from one of the ladies, from one of the neighbors over there. You know, that was a problem with two inches of rain in 15 minutes, and it overwhelmed the Stormwater system over there. But it was designed 40 years ago. And, you know, even though we fixed everything in that person's yard, it backed up because the whole system was a little bit undersized. So we still fix these problems. We are making sure to get in there. We have to reprioritize things, like with Nantamoy, where we had to go in there and make sure that it was back open again. You know, to be honest, I would also point out in King's Grant, the, we're still working with Mr. Scott all the time, trying to get those easements dedicated over to us so that we don't put ourselves in legal jeopardy by working on things that are on the private side. And we're trying. I mean, it's, it is, it's a trying process.
So, so thank you for educating me and clarifying my bad assumptions. Thank you.
There are, I will say, over 100 Stormwater projects on the list. If I'm not mistaken, there's 130-plus projects. So it's, it's a long list. And we're working through it.
So I just have, so one, I make no assumptions about your work. I see constantly the length of time and the detail that goes into it just over the few years that I've been on the council. So no assumptions, just a question because it is a cul-de-sac. Just wonder what the plan was. The other thing is, with the IT professional stepping down, I know that you have a good command of your system, that's the SCADA system that's over there. So you would be okay if we didn't find anyone quickly to step into that.
I literally was texting our IT professional or emailing him back and forth while I was, you know, preparing for the meeting. And my final response was, they were supposed to do the SCADA upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant on the 31st and the 1st. But I was not aware that he was taking the entire SCADA system down at the same time. We have two separate servers that run the exact same software. And it was always designed that if one goes down, or you need to service one, that the other one was still running the plant. I found out this afternoon that they were planning to take the entire SCADA system down for this upgrade. And that's not acceptable. I can't do that. You know, if I do that, it changes my treatment process, and I have to report that to MDE and theoretically get their approval for it in the long run. So my response back was, you know, do not upgrade the SCADA system until we get this straight because we have two systems that run in parallel. And it was always designed that if one goes down, the other one continues to run the plant. There's too many adjustments that happen all the time. You know, it would require someone to be there 24/7, making all the manual adjustments to the plant, which we don't have. And so I think, you know, I said to him just before I walked into this meeting, to postpone the SCADA upgrade. We do have a handle on it. We can certainly get We do have a handle on it. We can certainly get Schneider through SciTech to help us and they will always step in to help us on different upgrades. But we do need to have a contract with them and we will take care of that in the short term. So, you know, I'm not going to let it sit back and not be operational. So it should work.
Thank you.
Yes, as a follow-up, Director Stahl, thank you for telling us a little bit about projects that you have going on with regards to the King's Grant, kind of continual easement process and signing things over. Can you give me a rough estimate as to how many we're still waiting on to get some of these projects done? You know, I always want to be able to assist where we can in outreach. You know, we've tried in the past and some people show up and some don't.
Yeah. I would say if I had to guess, probably fifty-plus private easements is my assumption. Mayor, is that?
I would guess.
Mr. Scott is the attorney for the HOA. There's, the trouble with this is we can't step in and spend public money for what is now a private situation. And so we really shouldn't spend legal dollars. The HOA should spend those dollars. We're willing to accept the easements once they turn them over. But we really shouldn't spend public money on that legal process. And that's what causes hardship all the way down the line. People want us to do the easements, want us to create things for them. And that's really not appropriate in, you know, unless we have a special situation. I would say, I would give you the example of the easements that are behind the odd side of Wiltshire and down at the bottom of Suffolk. And I think you've seen some of the easement, the home at the corner of Wiltshire and Suffolk right there has a sinkhole in it. And that's one where I, I spoke with Ms. Curry again today. It is a challenge in that it has not been recorded yet. I did try to get Mr. Scott this afternoon to see if that one couldn't get pushed through because there is a large sinkhole there. But currently, that's one of those that's in the private side. And when Steve and I met two weeks ago, I prioritized all of those coming down there. And it's.
Some of that information, just so that I can communicate. I know the mayor knows. But it would be helpful because the mayor's got a lot of other duties too.
No, it's fine. I'd be happy to give you a full update on all of it. I mean, we do try to, you know, I did meet with Mr. Scott over about two weeks ago at the wastewater treatment plant and we prioritized all of those down that line because he asked me, he said, listen, I can't do them all at one time, but he said, give me a priority. So Melinda and I met with him. We looked right at the GIS and we went right down that line, all of those backyards right down. And what in the ten thirty-three case was the side yard kind of there? And just said, all of those were a priority for us.
So out of the fifty-plus, really, there's a wait, there's a waiting process for a number of them where they may have turned them over to their attorney. And it just hasn't been recorded yet.
That's.
And so we can't.
Could be. Now, Mrs. Curry said she had signed the document, but that she couldn't find out from Mr. Scott where that was in the process. Mr. Scott had indicated to me two weeks ago that none of those had been recorded. I think his assumption was that he would try to get them all together and record them all so that they were all in similar pages, you know, in line from, from a recording standpoint.
If, if I could get a list of just some of these items that we're still waiting, the wait-and-see mode as far as the easements, just so that I can be prepared when residents come and complain.
Okay.
Or have concerns about, obviously, their yards and the wastewater treatment situation, everything going on. There shouldn't be like a secret knowledge where, or we have to go up three chains just to get something that should be public. Like, look, we are ready to go as soon as these things happen because you've done your part clearly. And we want that to be open and shared such that the process keeps moving forward instead of it being, you know, this is a process been going on for, you know, since the last group of councilmen.
Listen, I can tell you that ever since we created the Stormwater Utility in two thousand thirteen, it's been an issue in all the neighborhoods. AgroCopia is one where it's going to be a, you know, a big challenge. King's Grant, Clark's Run. Clark's Run's a little bit different just because of the, the fact that the town owns a lot of the open space over there. In King's Grant, it was totally different because most of the open space was owned by the homeowners association. And so it, it became challenging. And it's not that we're trying to distance ourselves. I mean, to be honest, the easiest thing to do is hire a contractor, come in and say, look, here, do this and we provide them the materials and do it. It's another thing to do it.
A legal and appropriate way.
Correct. Where, I mean, you know, you know what I'm saying? I, I, it's, it's no different than procurement. You know, trying to go out and saying, hey, go put that pipe in the ground is one thing. Going out and doing it through a proper procurement process takes some time and that's challenging.
I just think four sentences of transparency is greater than, you know, five paragraphs of, explanation and apologies later, if you know what I mean, right? If I can just get that information so that we can get it to the HOA and they can get it to the right people so that they know, as has been the policy, town's ready to go as long as those things are met.
Sure.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. Well, you're asking a question I should know the answer to. Is there a mechanism in place that we could ensure moving forward that, say, I'm just going to use an example, the stormwater management bond, that we maybe do not release their bond entirely until all these easements are dedicated to the town?
That is.
To sort of correct today.
Today, right. Correct. We do that today. And, you know, Melinda, as, as I'm sure Janine would tell you is, is, you know, very huff on releasing bonds. Melinda, because she's always trying very hard to make sure that all the legal pieces are in place before we release bonds. Contractors are always mad at her because she doesn't. She makes sure that every last detail is done. Positive. You know, and, and I try and back her as best we can in that to make sure sewer and water is a little bit clearer because it's always been dedicated to the town. We do all the testing upfront. With stormwater, it's usually at the end because it's the last utility installed. You know, they have to go back and clean everything out. Whereas water and sewer, you know, I'd give you the example down at Pine Grove now. Most of Section K has already been inspected. We have water flowing out there because we have residents in that neighborhood right now that is working. Stormwater, we've inspected the installation, but we go back later at the end, once the streets are finally paved, making sure everything drains well. And so it is kind of a last part of the puzzle when we come in there. So it is, it is a little bit challenging with stormwater. And we're pretty tough on it. We carry a bond for up to ten years on that for the maintenance of the whole thing now. That just wasn't the case before two thousand thirteen. Everything went to, and I, I still believe today that we made the right decision to bring it to the town. We're not blaming the HOAs. We're not fining the HOAs like we would. We're out there trying to help solve the problem. What has happened to us is that the problem had built up for thirty or forty years before that. There's a lot of failing infrastructure that should have been fixed by the previous owner, but now it's all kind of, it comes to roost to us. And it's, it has been an interesting process of catch-up and we're still doing that. So.
Director Stahl, I have a quick question. The tarps and the tires over at Tillman Lake. Are we going to see those gone anytime soon?
Probably not. And I hate to tell. Do you, do you know what's under them?
Is that the salt?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we make it look like a beehive or something? But, because it is, I, someone sent me a picture today going, what is this? The tires is just like the, the frosting on the cake, I think.
Mayor, we hauled. We went in the salt business somehow. Somehow we created salt. We built the dome out of the old water tower over there. And we knew that it was going to hold five hundred tons of salt. So we filled it with five hundred tons of salt and it's full. The state highway wanted us to move the salt out of the dome up there and get it away from state highway. So we kept hauling it back. We built a concrete block walls and we were going to cover it up as a temporary thing. We hauled another eight hundred and some tons. So we had, since I've been here in fifteen years, the town of La Plata only purchased twelve hundred tons of salt. If I go back, we only purchased a total of twelve hundred tons of salt. And we've used salt every year except last year that I remember. Somehow we hauled over fifteen hundred tons of salt back to the dome that they said was ours. Now, I don't know how we created salt, but I was trying to appease state highway and we were trying to do it on a, you know, a, a temporary type of basis. But somehow we now have fifteen hundred tons of salt, which is an incredibly large amount of salt. And we will try to put a more permanent structure up over top of it instead of having tarps. But I honestly can't leave it open to the weather. So I have to cover the salt. I have to ensure that it doesn't blow away in a storm. Thus, the tires all over the top of it to hold the tarps down. But we promised state highway that we would remove all the salt out of the dome. I don't think we will buy any salt in my lifetime. Certainly not my working lifetime, which has been a good budgetary thing, but it is amazing how we ended up with a whole lot more salt because I felt like that five hundred tons, the most I've ever bought in one year was two hundred tons. I have five hundred in the old water tower that we fixed up. And I thought, wow, that's perfect for La Plata. It's just about the right amount. And state highway wouldn't take it. They just said, you've got to take it out of there. And so.
Sounds like a good project and maybe Director Phipps, when she comes over and talks about Bee City, will have a great idea about making a hive or something and we can make it look nice while still having fifteen hundred tons of salt. So.
Another project.
And no snow. Yeah.
I hope not. I, listen, I, nobody, you know, salt to us is honestly the problem with all of these pipes that we're talking about in stormwater. We've been our own worst enemy because you get forced to use something that's degrading your infrastructure. It's, you know, it's a corrosive product that flows down through all the pipes and, you know, creates a challenge for us and that situation. From a safety standpoint, you're somewhat required to use it. But we try.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions from council?
Could I just add a few things? I hate to do that.
Did you not put it in your report? Come on now.
I think there's just a couple of things that we wanted to point out that were beyond. Today, we had a load of trash cans come in, which as you know, are long lead-time items and that the, the residents want. And so I wanted to let you know that we did get a load of four hundred cans in today, which was very positive because we are going through them at a rapid rate. The twenty-four-inch gravity line that we ran all the way around to the Maples is totally active. So the jail, the sheriff's office, the Maples pump station, we were actually able to remove that pump station. And so that this week is now totally live and active and all flowing back to the plant. And the good news is we removed a pump station. So that was totally positive. As I said, we were working on the stormwater line there on Oriole. That's a hundred and twenty feet of twelve-inch pipe and that'll get pulled tomorrow. One of the other things I wanted to point out, and I believe, Mayor, it was through a contact with you, the FAA is considering donating another generator to us at two hundred KW, which is actually, could be extremely helpful to us because our generator down at the new Southwest Quadrant Pump Station got postponed again until next March. If we could get the donation from the FAA, it would be very positive because we would take that generator and put it down at Southwest Quadrant so that we could get that permit to operate that pump station. They won't give it to you without the backup generation. But if we got that as a donation, it would be extremely helpful. So I have been working with Tim out there to get that. So. Good, good thing. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we got notification this week that Lennar is finishing up the twelve-inch water line over at, to Laurel Springs. So we have now upgraded the water line all the way down St. Charles Parkway to sixteen-inch. And we will now have a twelve-inch line all the way through the Parklands neighborhood to Laurel Springs. The last piece of that line to take it to Tillman Lake will be, is in design with McCrone at this point. And that does not require an MDE permit, so we will be able to permit that one ourselves. So hopefully, before the end of the year, we will be contracting for that to install the final piece of that line over to Tillman Lake. That will give us the ability to buy up to a million gallons of water a day through that line. So the only piece in that would be a purchase agreement, not a physical infrastructure problem. The physical infrastructure problem will be fixed. The big thing will be is just getting an agreement. And the last thing, well, and I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Leave on a high note. Well, thank you very much. I know you all are working so hard and I appreciate that. All right. Next up there is Karina. Come on, our treasurer.
Any questions for our treasurer here?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
So Karina, on your first slide, where you referenced the sewer, you've got seven point six million in major facility fees has been recognized as of six thirty twenty twenty-three. The FY twenty-three budget is zero?
Yet we don't budget for that because that is not a budgeted item. That's based on development. And that goes into a fund balance to cover the cost of upgrading for the capacity for that development. So we don't forecast that number and that's all reserved in the major facility fund.
So when I look at the sewer category and it says a budgeted amount of approximately nine point eight, nine point nine million, then you've got revenue in excess of about ten point six or seven. And then you've got the expense around six million. Looks like to me that would give a very, a positive variance. And so it wouldn't be zero.
There is the budget, which we don't budget for. So the amounts that we get for the major facility is going into the fund for the major facility, the fund balance. The expenses like the projects for the upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant, that could be used from those funds.
So is, you have a budget line, but you don't budget for it. You've got revenue and expenses. And you're saying the budget is zero. Is the budget always zero?
For that particular revenue.
Right. But when I look at the sewer category, I see a budgeted.
Yes. Well, you still, in that sewer category, there's the sewer user fees that we collect. Let's see, there's, there's other fees in there. Hold on.
It says seven point six in major facility fees. It says 7.6 in major facility fees. You've got an asterisk by sewer and you've got an asterisk by that footnote there. Is that referencing the sewer?
It's in the sewer fund. So the sewer fund consists of that revenue. That revenue is to upgrade like the um, the wastewater treatment plant. So it's earmarked. It's, it's um, it's restricted.
Right. I guess I'm just confused when you have a budgeted.
Well, there's a. Well, there is. There's the budget amount, which is the operation costs. Like running the wastewater treatment plant, um, the pump stations. So the.
If I could help Karina in this, we charge each new building permit $16,200 in a major facility fee. And it is totally for the upgrades. Because we have been getting so many new building permits, that number has gone up tremendously. And so that's seven, what that's allowed us to do is actually cash flow. The payments on the wastewater treatment plan upgrade, the Southwest Quadrant Pump Station, all of those have now been paid for out of cash. And once we then get reimbursed by USDA on that loan, then the payments on that loan would also then come from that major facility fee balance. And so I just wanted to make this from the operational standpoint.
I must be really slow on this one because I'm, I guess I'm just seeing that you've got budget. You've got revenue in excess of the budgeted amount and in excess of expense. So I don't see how it's zero. Um, it seems to me that there would be a positive variance. And if you're moving that positive variance to another fund, I get that, but.
It's all in the sewer fund. So the reason the budget is zero is because we didn't budget for it. But the revenue line has that revenue. That's the revenue that was earned.
Got you. I'm clear on revenue. But I still look, line that says budget.
Yeah, it, we didn't budget. So on that line, we've recognized, when I say recognize, that means that's between cash receipts and AR balance. That's the total that we received in FY23 between the cash receipts and the AR.
Right.
Um, so even though the budget, when the budget was prepared, we did not budget any revenue coming in for major facilities. We received the revenue, which goes towards those upgrades um, for capacity. Let me just.
Okay, um, I just.
Let me find.
I mean, I totally understand recognizing revenue. I get that piece. I just don't understand if you're saying that it's not budgeted. How do I have a budget revenue and expense column? But I'm probably not going to get it. So.
So for the um, budget, we budget for like the user fees, the connection charges, the plan reviews, um, any grants. That's what's in the budgeted revenues.
But you're saying we don't budget, but you're saying we do budget.
We don't budget for the major facility fees. That revenue line, that one revenue line, we do not budget for. But all the others, the user fees, the connection charges, the plan reviews, other miscellaneous income, like in, um, interest income. That's part of the revenue budget.
But it comes into the sewer fund, right? So then it's still in my mind, you, even though you didn't budget for that revenue, you received it. So you received revenue that was not budgeted for an expense of the budgeted revenue and expenses. It seems it wouldn't be zero. It appears to me it would be a positive variance.
Just that one revenue line.
Okay.
Okay.
Like, so we had balanced budgets. So we budgeted 9.8 million for the expense and the revenue. Of that 98.4 million, none of it was budgeted for the major facility fees. That just shows that we received the 7 million in major facility fees. So right now, what's my actual numbers, what's the major facility fees?
I don't labor it, you know, so everybody else is clear. I'm just dense on this one. We can move on to any other questions and anything else that you want to.
I just wanted to encourage Councilwoman Bryant Ward, you're not dense. I'm, I'm trying to track with you because I understand what you're saying. So yeah, any clarification is helpful. And thank you for asking those questions.
All right. Well, I do have a question. How are we doing on Water Smart signups?
I don't know how we're doing on it. We, it went out on the bill. We put a little blurbage on the bill for it. I have, I, I don't track. I have not tracked the water signups for it.
And is that, that, Bobby, you, you all don't do that. That is at the.
The resident would sign up. We, we don't know when they sign up unless we go and look. We have to log in and look for it. But I mean, we are doing a push for that. There wasn't on the bill and I know there's, um, Michelle is working on an announcement.
I, I know they're going to do a, a push out on social media on that. But I didn't know if there was a percentage um, that of people who have signed up.
Before we did the push, last number was around 500, just under 500.
500 out of 3,500.
Yeah, it's like 490 something.
Okay. So I think that. Oh, I just think that is such a great resource um, and to have. And, and I do understand people are a little um, squeamish about giving out more information. But boy, and I think that can save people a lot of money if that is, if they sign up for that, just in case they have a leak. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right. Next up is Director Phipps. All right. Any questions for Director Phipps?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Wildlife habitat logo. I would really love to see that on a car tag or something. I don't know if we get revenue. You see specialized tags. I mean, I don't know what we're, you know, doing with the Bird City designation in the Sustainable Maryland. But if we could do something with that shirts, little yard flags or something, it would be great.
If it is the will of the council, I will start that tomorrow.
Yes, you would. Any other questions? She's, I think she's asking. Are you asking us to do, I mean, do you have a plan or do you want to bring us a plan?
Our town clerk has already begun research on how to do that. Now we got in touch with Ocean City's uh, city clerk as far as getting it on a license plate, as far as merchandising it on uh, T-shirts and other paraphernalia. We have the arts work group who do this all the time. So we have resources to tap into.
Do you think that um, we could receive, since there is an interest right here? Do you think that we could maybe receive some more information on that? Especially if the clerk has reached out uh, for the license plates and merchandise? Who would it be, who would it be sold to, where, whose housing it, all of that good stuff? The funding, because this sounds like it's a project that may not have budget uh, line, budget item on it. But it's, it is, especially with the news that's coming up in a little bit. This is just one more piece to that great puzzle that we have been trying to build. So is that something that uh, warrants further research?
100% Madam Mayor.
Okay.
When would you like an up, an update on that?
Tomorrow.
Afternoon. Could it be afternoon?
You know what? It would be great. And we will get a consensus to see if, um, if this is something that is uh, I probably should ask your boss there, um, to see if he will allow you to do um, some research on that. Is this something worth exploring on uh, since we are certified wildlife habitat for merchandising? And perhaps getting it on license plate? All right. We've got it by all means.
I, I think the broader question as to like all of our efforts in these niche items is what does it do for our residents and, and the town? I, I'm in support of any answer to that question. Cause we could probably endlessly get pieces of flair, uh, so to speak. As we, um, I mean, there's all sorts of organizations we can join and get certifications from. But I think, you know, any way we can look at the things that we've already done. How do they benefit our residents in the town? To that being, yes. And any opportunities for the future, I think should be looked at through that lens. So, yeah.
All right.
Yes. And Councilman Traulander, that was my, my um, thought behind it. We got all these designations, but nobody's aware of them. They sit here in, in the town council. And maybe someone may have heard of it outside of it. But bringing awareness to it was the thought behind it and potentially getting revenue from it if we could, would be great.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Uh, I would concur with both uh, Councilwoman Evelyn Bryant Ward's and Councilman Bryant's comments. Cause it is, there is, I think, an issue of there's an education gap. So I think all this goes to helping folks understand what's going on. And this is a good time since we're going to be updating the websites. So.
Fantastic.
Another way, another way to get our folks engaged in our community. The short answer is yes.
Okay. And Director Phipps, in all seriousness, um, I, when it is appropriate, when you have the time to do that, that would be great. You do not have to do it tomorrow. Whenever you have the information, we'll put it on. I know. Prioritize. I, I see your, I'm getting a side eye from your boss. So whatever works into your schedule, this is something that may be taking a little bit longer. But um, if the wheels are already in motion, you've got a consensus to move um, ahead and explore possibilities.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, our Director of uh, Human Resources. Do we have any questions for um, Ms. Kennedy, Director Kennedy? Go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Matt Traulander Ward too, uh, thank you for your report. I was curious, um, there were just like two candidates in one of the positions that didn't pass the background check. And so we had to kind of move on. Would we, is it normal to, to do the background check after we've offered or is that?
Yes, the, the laws actually say that we can't do any kind of background or medical exams or even collect any kind of medical information, uh, anything that's sensitive until after we've given them a conditional offer. And then once they have a conditional offer, um, they sign a release and that pretty much opens our door to dig into whatever we need um, for each position. But yeah, there, it's, at the federal level, it's very clear that we can't, we can't consume information on a candidate without their knowledge or permission or for them to know that there's an actual offer on the table, that there's an incentive for them.
They are publicly accessible and that things that are, are public knowledge that would, this is surpassing that. So for example, if they have things that are out in the public, we are doing that research ahead of time before making an offer, right? Or no, that's best to just wait for the background check.
Correct. Yeah. And, and, and typical HR best practices now too is not to try to look at somebody's social media or do any of those kinds of looks before, um, before we've had any kind of interactions with candidates. Because that brings in a lot of unconscious bias and um, discrimination potential. So yeah, it's usually best to keep completely hands off until that's somebody you've assessed based just on their knowledge and skills and abilities before taking any kind of steps like that.
Social media accounts, right? Like, you know, um, private stuff, but just publicly available information that is accessed. But that's okay.
Yeah.
I, I understand. And I think that's a good policy. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That brings us to matters of information. Um, Ms. Minor, Centennial Street and St. Mary's four way stop.
Just a real quick update. We uh, based on the traffic study done by Mead and Hunt several years ago, it was determined that a four-way stop was warranted at Centennial Street and St. Mary's Avenue. So we are going to start the installation. You've probably seen the communication campaign today with the electronic, electronic signs out. Um, we'll be doing social media messaging, visuals, town webpage updates, news releases and FAQs. Um, the temporary delays, um, not anticipating a lot. The main part of the construction is going to be on August 21st, weather permitting. The intersection will remain open. There'll be flaggers out there. But you may see some um, construction in the area before then, while they're out there marking things, putting up poles, things of that nature. So with, uh, we want this completed when school starts on August 28th.
Excellent. Has the, and I know the chief is, is here. Has the stop, four-way stop at Glen Albin and St. Mary's uh, been successful?
I would think so. And, and we shared some statistics with Michelle about it.
There's been zero reported crashes since September of last, uh, September of 2022 and zero reported crashes for uh, 2023 so far.
Knock on wood. Good. I know that was a change of behavior as well, when you're putting up the stop signs. So it will take a little bit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So um, at the four-way on Glen Albin and um, St. Mary's on the, I guess you would say the northbound side, they put that line so far back. Every other line is closer to the intersection. So you can see what's coming. But that one line is further back. I hope they make it even on the St. Mary's and Centennial. Because that, I'm concerned about that one because people pass the white line that says stop here, you know? And they go up further. So you don't know if they're going to run that stop sign or what's happening. So that was just a, a weird dynamic that they would put that one particular one so far back.
The challenge was, and I, I had them bring up the uh, Google Earth uh, image. And one of the things you will note and, and part of the, there was a question about why we, why we didn't put crosswalks in associated with everything. But if you'll notice on the northbound side on St. Mary's Avenue, the sidewalk, if, if, if you could bring your cursor down to the southern side of the intersection, keep going a little bit farther south, right there. A little bit farther north, you see where the sidewalk, the sidewalk actually comes into that, enters the ramp down, comes into that intersection way back where that arrow is. And so you see that, that's where the sidewalk goes right there.
That's why the line is there?
Um, they tried to make it, you're supposed to have the stop bar so that they stop for where the crossing is in front. And so when they installed the stop bar, because of where the ramp going across the street is and nothing over in that intersection matches up. And what's really challenging is we don't own Glen Albin.
Yeah.
On that side, the county owns Glen Albin. We own St. Mary's. And theoretically, we own Glen Albin going down to 301. The county's claiming that now. So they're claiming that. The interesting piece was, if you, we were talking about taking the sidewalk around the corner on the Glen Albin side where you see it coming Glen Albin East. Glen Albin East, the sidewalk ends right there, kind of just beyond the stop bar on the, on the other side, Kelly. Right there. It ends right there. We were talking about bringing the sidewalk around, except there's all kinds of utilities. And if you see, if you notice right there by the stuff, that's a utility pole. Right where we would need to come across, we would have to move a utility pole in order to get to utilize that on the other side. So in order to straighten this all out, we would have to move curb and gutter. We'd have to really put in handicap ramps that were closer to the intersection on both sides. And then tie it across over to. and then tie it across over to, none of the intersections had viable. And the challenge with a crosswalk, just like it is, we're fixing one of the corners up at Centennial on the 15th, I think, I said 17th, something like this, 16th. We have to fix one of the, the handicap ramps on one of the corners up at Glen Albin. I mean, excuse me, at Centennial at St. Mary's. Here, it would take basically major upgrades to that intersection, sadly enough, in order to straighten this out. And that being said, we would have to work with the county and try to get things with the county because of the ownership interest. We have a 30-foot right-of-way for St. Mary's Avenue. And so a lot of that sidewalk right there would actually be on the county's side. So it's, it's a little bit more challenging getting those projects going, but I, that, that was the reason for the stop bar being.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? I think Councilman Jenkins. Oh, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you again, from Ward 4, Dave Jenkins. While we're on transportation, thank you, Ms. Minor, about this update. That, that's great, and I'm glad you're obviously doing the public outreach. Probably a bridge too far or maybe not at this time, but do we have any idea when the state's going to turn on the signal at 488 and Radio Station Road?
Thursday.
This coming Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have any idea when the, D R Horton's going to build the, the signal at Willow Lane and Charles Street in their intersection? Do we have any, any notion when that's going to happen?
I am not aware.
Not aware.
Yeah, I have no update.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you for that news, appreciate that. All right, Chief, come on down. If you want to take that mic off there, that, good, thank you. And why don't you just make yourself comfy? It looks like you've got several requests. All right.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
The agency, as you know, has a series of purchases tonight, mostly related to our vehicles. We need to make sure that we get in line as quick as we can because of supply issues we're seeing with vehicles and with some of the other things that chips like radios. We also want to get this done before there's any more price increases. All of the requests tonight are inclusive of the FY24 budget and was approved. Because of the rising costs, this series of purchases will go over our budget by about $1,400. We're not asking for any more money, we'll just absorb it someplace else, having a bottom line budget. During the FY24 budget presentation, La Plata Police Department budgeted five new police vehicles. Tonight, we're only asking for four. It is the agency's recommendation to purchase four Dodge Durangos through the Maryland State Contract awarded to Chriswell Fleet of Gaithersburg. The cost of the purchase is $161,256. And as I noted, this was inclusive in our budget request and was approved.
All right, any questions for the chief?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you budgeted for five and you're only asking for four, are you going to come back for the fifth one?
I don't think so. One of the things we looked at, and Corinne and I exchanged some emails on Sunday, we, we see the price of everything going up. We believe it's going to be tight, but we believe we can get by with the four that we have coming in and these four that we're ordering. So barring, you know, a car being totaled or something along those lines, we don't plan to come back to the council and ask for the fifth vehicle.
Okay. Lieutenant Nurse, you're not going to crash a vehicle, are you?
No ma'am.
I've seen you drive.
One of those new ones is supposed to be mine, so I like to baby my vehicle.
Um, do we have a consensus to move this forward to legislation?
Yes.
Yes. Be good. All right, we'll move that forward. Thank you very much. Next, on the purchasing of uplifting, upfitting, sorry, not glasses aren't on.
Thank you, Mayor. During the FY24 budget preparation, La Plata Police Department budgeted for the upfitting of eight new police vehicles, four from the FY23 budget and then four from the, the vehicles that were just approved. Historically, the outfitter has asked us to wait until the new vehicle VIN numbers are generated before we move forward with ordering our equipment. However, our outfitter, who we've been doing business with for approximately eight years, let us know that the, both equipment and labor for the upfitting of cruisers was going to increase. They have extended the offer to us to buy all the equipment, and this includes the in-car cameras, and lock in the labor rates at the current price instead of splitting this between two different purchases. So it's our recommendation that we purchase the upfitting equipment for eight Dodge Durangos. Five will be marked, three will be unmarked, utilizing the Safewear contract. It's important for, for us, and it is, I think, for the, the town. Frontline Mobile Tech, who we have been doing business with, is both an authorized Motorola and Panasonic, Panasonic installer. So all the work that they perform in our, on our vehicles is 100% guaranteed. When I first got here, that wasn't the case. So if you had a radio problem, one installer was pointing the fingers at another. This is one-stop shopping for us and it works very well.
All right, any questions for the chief? All right, do I have a consensus to move forward with the upfitting of the vehicles?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, I am a yes as well. And that gives us, that brings us to the purchase of the Motorola radios.
Thank you, Mayor. During FY24 budget preparation, La Plata Police Department budgeted for four new portable radios and eight new mobile radios. It is the agency's recommendation to purchase these radios utilizing the Baltimore City Motorola Equipment Master Purchase Agreement. The total cost is $89,963.56. As you know, there's only one manufacturer of radios for police vehicles, that is Motorola. Years ago, Ericsson used to make them, so it would be sole, kind of a sole source purchase. However, the Baltimore City contract provides us with about a 25% discount on what we're purchasing. So the funds for the radios were included in the FY24 budget and Baltimore City has kindly allowed us to piggyback on their contract.
Thank you for that. Any questions on the Motorola radio purchase?
We will. Sorry. No, that's all. So when we, when the Department of Emergency Services update their communication capabilities, does that, so we buy these radios, does that make our radios not work?
It could, but we were in lockstep with them. There's been no word coming from emergency service or the Sheriff's Department about moving towards a new radio. This is very expensive to do, and we've been phasing this in almost my entire tenure here of moving to this new system. And as we all know, on 9/11, we learned a lot about having the ability to have inter-agency communications. So this allows us to do that.
And you said about 16 years that it should last us somewhere?
Yeah, that, that's the minimums. It should last for two cruisers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'm looking for a consensus to move this forward to legislation. Councilman Goldsmith?
Yes.
Councilman.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, all right, and I am a yes as well. And our last one for the police department is the computer purchase for Panasonic Toughbook.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. La Plata Police Department's recommending the purchase of seven Panasonic Toughbook FZ55 laptop computers. These computers are the lifeline for our communications and intelligence for officers in their vehicles. We buy recognized computers because they're able to stand up to the weather extremes of heat and cold that a, a computer in a cruiser would have to endure. We would be buying these computers from Frontline Mobile Tech, certified Panasonic dealer. The cost is $3,554 each, a total of $24,878. The purchase would be in concert with the G S A Schedule 70 contract.
All right, any questions on this item? All right, looking for a consensus? All right, I've got thumbs up and Councilman Traulender?
Yes.
Council, all right, we got, they even jumped the gun on that one. All right, thank you, that it is a consensus to move it forward to legislation. Thank you so much. And next is Bee City USA affiliation with a new bee, Beehive Salt, don't just say it, sorry. You can, you can stand, sit, do what you want. All right, can you tell us a little bit about Bee City USA affiliation and what the ask is tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Bee City USA is a nationally recognized certification for bee-friendly practices, most of which we are already doing in the course of our Bird City USA or our Bird City Maryland efforts and Tree City USA. So this is just consistent in the birds, bees and trees triumvirate. This has been on our Green Team's Action Plan since 2021. It is also in compliance with the Comprehensive Code or the Comprehensive Plan as far as providing opportunities for citizens and businesses to engage in sustainable measures. It is a Healthy Habits Group of Keep La Plata Beautiful. It did kind of languish there for a couple of years until we had a volunteer who was willing to commit the time to chair it. And that came in the form of Cassandra Morris, who came in blind. She is not a bee expert, she is not a pollinator expert of any sort, but she was willing to investigate and learn and figure out how to do this. Through her enthusiasm, we attracted the interest of the Bee Campus Program at, at C S M. So they joined on as advisors, also a couple of our advisors from the existing Healthy Habits Group joined in. And then suddenly we had a team of six people working on Bee City USA certification.
So we're looking for a consensus to proceed with the application fee. They're asking for $200 for the application fee and to move forward that we are going to become a Bee City USA affiliate. We good, all right?
Yes.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am enthusiastically saying yes.
And I'll make sure we get some bees on that graphic for the license plate.
I love that, thank you very much. All right, that brings us to our legislation. Resolution 23-27, La Plata Police Department Fiscal Year 2024 Vehicle Purchase for Introduction and Consideration of Adoption. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. A resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Fiscal Year 2024 Vehicle Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement of utility vehicles for the La Plata Police Department and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt this legislation?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 23-27, La Plata Police Department Fiscal Year 2024 Vehicle Purchase as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further comments? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Next is Resolution 23-28.
Yes, Madam Mayor, La Plata Police Department Vehicle Upfitting and Related Equipment. This item is for introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Vehicle Upfitting and Related Equipment for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement with a professional police upfitting company for the acquisition and installation of the equipment necessary for eight police vehicles and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-28?
Madam Mayor? I recommend we adopt Resolution 23-28, La Plata Police Department Vehicle Upfitting and Related Equipment.
Fantastic. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any, I love this, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, brings us to Resolution 23-29 for consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. A resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Computer Purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of seven notebook computers for installation and use in La Plata Police Department Vehicles and all matters generally relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-29 as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 23-29, La Plata Police Department Computer Purchase as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? All right, all in, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us to, oh, yet another one, Resolution 23-30 for consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. A resolution concerning La Plata Police Department Purchase of Motorola Radios for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of Motorola mobile radios, portable radios and additional parts and accessories for the La Plata Police Department and all matters generally related thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-30 as presented?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-30 as presented, La Plata Police Department Purchase Motorola Radios.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to our final resolution for the evening, Resolution 23-26 for consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council. A resolution concerning Bee City USA affiliation for the purchase, purpose of enhancing understanding among local government staff and the public about the vital role that pollinators play and what each of us can do to sustain them in designating the town of La Plata as a Bee City USA affiliate and all matters generally related thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 23-26 as presented?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 23-26 Bee City USA affiliation as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us to the commission reports. Councilman Goldsmith?
Yeah, the Zon Review Board last meeting reviewed the renovation of the Dash Inn on 301. And they'll be putting in a new car wash as well, so that's moving forward.
Thank you very much. Councilman Traulender?
No commission report.
Okay, Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yeah.
Councilman Jenkins?
No commission report.
All right, and I do have a report for upcoming, first of all. If you have not seen, the bollards are put back up in front of Panda Express. They were put up over the weekend and I am sure that many are excited about that. It is a safety concern and I spoke with State Highway, they put it up on Sunday, so that was wonderful. As indicated just a bit ago, 488, we will be getting the new traffic light and that will, they, State Highway has said that will become operational on Thursday, the 27th. So that is going to be something new there, so it's going to be a, a learning curve for many. Great news we received from the Transportation Planning Board. They approved $1.4 million for the La Plata Bike Way Radio Station roadside path. This project will construct a continuous 10-foot-wide buffered bike, bikeway shared use path for 2.25 miles connecting schools, neighborhoods and a variety of recreational and natural areas in the east of downtown La Plata, so that was exciting. We've got this weekend, this Friday, Girl Crush is our band on this Friday. And the following Friday is the hometown band. As mentioned, August 1st, Tuesday is our National Night Out where we will be out in the community along with our first responders. August 8th, Uncle Devon Show, he is coming here. It's an interactive musical experience for children by renowned drummer and percussionist Devon Walker. The show cultivates the minds of children through percussion instruments and is a dynamic cross between DC's Trouble Funk and Schoolhouse Rock. So you had me at Schoolhouse Rock, that one sounded interesting. And then on August 10th, to continue with the kids' fitness classes, you've got Charles County Parks and Recreation Move and Groove where your kids can run, jump and play to the sound of music. where your kids can run, jump, and play to the sound of music, and they will play short, exciting games to get your little ones moving and grooving. And then on August 7th, we are all invited to the ribbon cutting of Charles County's first charter school, and it is Phoenix International School of the Arts. They have a school, it's opening at 95 Catolpa Drive, and this is going to have 175 students there, 106 graders, 57th graders, and 25 8th graders, where they will be exposed to the arts such as music through instruments, singing, acting, dance. They have media there, and it's really an exciting time, and it should be a pretty big deal, so we are inviting you all out to the ribbon cutting at 5:00 PM on August 7th. And with that said, I have nothing else, and I move to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for coming and have a safe evening. Meeting adjourned.